I'd like to ask that we all rise and remain standing for the presentation of the colors, the pledge, and then a moment of silence.
Hold. Face. Air. Ready. Cut. Present. Colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which sustains, my nation under God, in the goodness of her everyty and justice.
There you go. Ready. Cut. Hold. Colors. Ready. Cut. Hold. Arms. Right face. Oh, left. Left. Right. Right. Right.
Thank you. Want to welcome everyone tonight. We want to also thank the Ove Como High School NJROTC for their presentation of the colors and helping us with the pledge. And without further ado, I would ask that Dr. Agalor, you have any opening comments?
Yes, sir, I do. Board members, on October 18th, J. Wallace James Elementary School hosted a Hispanic breakfast sponsored by the counselors Pamela Thomas, Sanja Hartley, and Danielle Cole. This was the fourth parent and family engagement event held at J. Wallace James this year. New guidelines in the Every Student Succeeds Act requires districts to provide and implement effective parent, family, and community engagement activities, and these opportunities must be extended to all parents, including parents of non-English proficient students. Congratulations to J. Wallace James Elementary School staff for setting very high expectations. On October 20th, Paulborough Middle School hosted their first All-Pro Dad's Day program. Approximately 50 fathers and their children talked about how to open up lines of communication between father and child. In addition, door prizes and a free breakfast were offered to all attendees. Paulborough looks forward to hosting All-Pro Dad's Day once a month for the remainder of the school year. Thanks to Toby Bailey and Scott Andropont for approaching Paulborough about this wonderful program. Saturday, October 22nd, Paulborough's staff participated in UL's big event. Approximately 25 volunteers, along with Paulborough administration and teachers, pulled up their sleeves and landscaped, painted, and cleaned out old lockers. After four hours of hard work, Paulborough is cleaner and more inviting to our students, faculty, staff, and parents. Thank you to our community partners for making a difference. Capital One Bank conducted recently a Junior Achievement Day called A-Day at Katherine Drexel Elementary School on October 26th. All third grade classes received financial literacy programs which were paid for by Capital One Bank. In addition, their bank's managers taught the classes. Capital One Bank managers had nothing but praise for the students and were impressed with the type of questions they were asked. The bank managers requested to return to Katherine Drexel next year to teach the Junior Achievement Program, Our City. Congratulations to the Katherine Drexel administration, teachers, and students for an awesome job. On October 26th, LPSS Student Services Staff Gear Up UL Lafayette's Financial Aid and Office of First Year Experience hosted the LPSS Parent Financial Aid Assistance Night for ninth through 12th grade. Attendance exceeded capacity with over 600 in attendance. Parents left with information regarding FAFSA grants and scholarships. Approximately 70% of the attendees represented junior and senior-level parents. And this month, each high school will provide an opportunity for seniors and their parents to complete the FAFSA. For more information, a senior should see his or her high school counselor. Congratulations to Caron Crowe Middle School's Cubs. They won the parish championship football title. They defeated Judy Smithill in the championship event that happened on Thursday, October 27th. They will be recognized at next week's meeting. Congratulations to Katie Geiger, kindergarten teacher at Caron Crowe Heights Elementary School. She has been selected as Locue's Early Childhood Teacher of the Year for Region Four. She will be recognized at the Locue Conference being held in New Orleans in December. Congratulations also to Erin Kaiser, the librarian at Milton Elementary Middle School. She has been selected as the Locue Region Four Leader of the Year and will also be recognized at the Locue Conference Meeting at the award ceremony on Thursday, December 8th. And lastly, this Saturday, November 5th, is our district's Schools of Choice Fall Frenzy. This event gives families an opportunity to see and hear about the unique educational experience their child can have at a Lafayette Parish school. At the Fall Frenzy, teachers and students from our academies and programs will be available to answer questions and assist parents and students in selecting the right program. Additionally, there will be themed, hands-on activities and performances from many of the Schools of Choice programs. Computers will be available to give parents and students an opportunity to apply for a Schools of Choice program. Please join us at the Fall Frenzy on Saturday, November 5th, from 10 until 2:00 p.m. at the Lafayette Convention Center next to Vacation Dome. And I guess the last thing I want to advise the board is that I will be submitting an application Friday of this week to NSBA. There's an awards program called Magna Awards. These awards are given out to exemplary educational programs. I believe our Schools of Choice program is exemplary, and I'm proud that I will be submitting an application for consideration for the Lafayette Parish school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Agalor. And if I may, I'd like to take maybe 30 seconds to give a shout-out to the principal of Acadian Middle School, Mr. Moore. I read on the paper recently where he was selected one of the 20 under 40. Congratulations to him for that. Also, I'd like to congratulate Tyrean Scott from Caron Crowe High School, who's in the Information Technology School of Choice, for developing a filter for Snapchat. And I just want you to know that as of about 30 minutes ago, I know what he did. I thank you, Justin, and congratulations, Tyrean Scott. Moving along, Pupil Progression Plan, Ms. Lightfoot?
Thanks for... Oh, just... Hi, thanks for having me. I'm not exactly sure what I need to say about this, but I do have some concerns. I know some of them are probably mine and only mine, but in speaking to other parents and teachers, I don't think I'm the only one. I have questions about this policy that was put in place. And again, as a parent, I'm not an educator. I'm just a parent. I knew nothing about this until I was about a few days before the parent-teacher conferences, and I only knew because a friend was talking about it, and I said, "What?" And I know I'm not the only one. So, I was asked to come speak about this because I was kind of griping about it on Facebook, and I did not want to be one of those people that just gripes and doesn't actually act. So, I guess my questions are, why aren't parents more involved in this? Now, I did hear through Facebook and talking to people after this that I guess there is some parent involvement groups or a parent advisory board or something that was involved in this, but I don't think a lot of parents know anything about how to be involved. And I guess I'm just asking the board that if we could do something to get parents more involved, because there are a lot of us out there that would like to be more involved in some of the decisions or even just learning about them. I know a lot of people gripped about the grading. A lot of people were griping about it. And I don't think it's so much a gripe about the grading system, although there are plenty gripes about it, but it's more, we just didn't know anything about it. We didn't know why it was put into place. We didn't know what was put into place. A lot of those kind of questions. And in speaking to other parents, they had the same concerns. In speaking to teachers, I spoke to teachers at six different schools, from elementary all the way up to high school. Different teachers were told different things by their administrations. Some teachers were told they had to have four summative and four formative. Some teachers were told nothing. They didn't know what they had to have. Other teachers were told they had to have X, Y, Z. So, there's obviously a disconnect somewhere. When teachers at different schools aren't all doing the same thing, to me, that tells me there's a problem. I'm concerned. Why? As a parent, I definitely had no idea. Why was this put into place? What is the goal of it? I heard from a few people that it might be because they were concerned that this might help kids struggling, where the formative tests, quizzes, and whatnot, will help a kid learn the material. And then, once they master it, they have a summative test, and that, once they ace it, their grade is going to go up. The problem is, if they don't ace that test, it is destroying a lot of kids' grades. And on the other side of the coin, and I guess this is a good thing, one grade of my daughter's changed her grade 10 points. To me, that's ridiculous. No single test should be able to affect a child's grade that much. Now, I guess I should just shut up about it because it actually helped her. It brought her up 10 points. But I know plenty of parents whose kids went down 10 points because of a single test. To me, that's ridiculous. I mean, you know, if a kid has a bad day, a kid is hungry, a kid is just not feeling well, and they bomb a couple of the summative tests, their grade is in the toilet. That makes no sense to me. And again, as a parent, I'd like to know more about this stuff before it's put into place. I know part of that is definitely on me. I probably need to search this stuff out, but it's hard. As a parent, where do we look? Where do we go? How do we find this stuff out? So, I'm kind of asking the board if there's anything we can do to help us out, to get this information out there in a more timely disseminated manner. And then, again, with the teachers, why, at six different schools, are we hearing six different ways of implementing this? If we're going to roll a policy out, it should be rolled out across the board the same way. So, to me, these are a lot of concerns I'm having. I have a lot of notes, and I think I kind of got off-topic a little bit, so I'm trying not to look at them because I think I'm going to start rambling, and I know I have a limited amount of time, but that's kind of where I'm at with this policy. I don't know if anybody can answer those questions, but those are definitely concerns of mine. And in speaking to a lot of parents and a lot of teachers, it's not just my concern. So, I'm just kind of asking for help. If there's anything we can do, any explanations, just making sure that our teachers have the resources and the time they need to get this stuff rolled out to the best of their ability. So, I guess that's all I have to say.
Mr. Centeni?
Ms. Lightfoot, thank you for coming tonight. I'll have you know that it's been my practice, you're not the first person to tag me in a Facebook post complaining about something, but you are the first to take me up on my offer to be placed on the agenda and come speak at a school board meeting. So, thank you for doing that, really. You're obviously very passionate and very concerned about your children's education. If we had more parents like you, we would...
I do think we have a lot of parents like me. I just think that sometimes we feel defeated.
As a parent, and listen, I'm a very involved parent, and sometimes I don't know where to go to get information. So, I will say, and we discussed this a little bit, that there is a parental component to the Pupil Progression Plan Committee, which is where a lot of these policies are developed. And one of the things we can do is, at the end of the year, we can send out, and I know one of the issues you have, I think, is that we're either sending out this information in the beginning of the year or the end of the year, when children are coming home with stacks of paper that big, and you're asked for your signature and triplicate and all this other stuff, right? But there is several committee meetings during the summer where the principals and the educators develop these policies in a committee-style format where it's very collaborative and ideas are debated. And then, there is a parental component to that, where a parents' committee meets and reviews it and gives their feedback. And you're welcome, anyone is welcome to participate in any of those meetings. These are all public meetings, and we certainly would love to have more parental involvement. So, I think, going into next year, what I've written down is, we're going to try to do a one-page summary of, here's what's changed for this year. And maybe it's as simple as putting it in the front page of the student handbook or a page in a folder, something, but we'll do something like that. And as far as the teachers, I don't have an answer for you on that one. I'm sorry. But we'll certainly ask some questions, and if we can do, if it means early school-year professional development, if it means we need to do our training to disseminate the policy decisions made at the administrative level, if we need to do that better, then that's what we'll do. But I agree with you that we need to do a better job of implementing these policies once we adopt them.
All right. Well, I appreciate it. That's all I can ask. I don't know about putting it in the handbook. I'm not sure. There's a lot of parents that read the handbook cover-to-cover, so...
Front page of the handbook, maybe?
Yeah, that's true. Maybe where we have to sign.
Right, right. Right above where you have to sign.
But I do appreciate it. I just, like I said, I think there are a lot of us out here that would like to be more involved, and I definitely am not trying to throw teachers under the bus. I don't think it was a teacher problem. I don't think they were given the time or the necessary information to put this policy in place. So, I think that's, you know, I definitely, I love our teachers. I'm not trying to put them under the bus. And I really hate to give them more professional development, because I know they have enough of that as well, but I just figure, we put these policies in place, we really need to make it square across the board so that all schools and all kids are doing the same thing.
Maybe we give them the same memo that we give parents. I don't know. There's something, we're going to work on it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Ms. Lightfoot, I don't want you to sell yourself short concerning being a teacher. You are your children's first teacher.
Well, sure. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Elementary grade alignment, Dr. Agalor? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. These are introductory items, time-sensitive. Elementary grade alignment, Dr. Agalor? 2.2, renaming of policy file BH to BE and related policy revisions. 2.3, general fund budget revision for additional assistant principals position.
Mr. President, I move that we move items 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3 to action.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded by Mr. Lachale. Any questions or comments concerning the motion from members of the audience? Any questions from members of the board? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. All right, motion carries. All right, I'll read off the following consent agenda items. If any of you wish any of them to be pulled, please indicate. 3.1, consider approval of rezoning plan for 1718.
Pull that, please.
3.2, consider approving name for non-traditional school.
Pull that, please.
3.3, approve that the non-traditional school be located at the WD and Mary Baker Smith Career Center facility.
You pull that one.
3.4, approval of revised job description, federal programs manager. 3.5, approval of revised job description, homeless education program facilitator. 3.6, adoption of policy GAMJ, miscellaneous conditions of employment. 3.7, adoption of policy GBRA, employee conduct. 3.8, revision of policy GBRH, professional leave. 3.9, revision of policy GBF, orientation. 3.10, approval of architect for Como High Performing Arts.
Pull that, please.
3.11, Southside High School staffing and budgeting. 3.12, estimated budget revision, adding high school bookkeeper assistants. 3.13, Fair Labor Standards Act, new mandates. 3.14, consider grade span configuration for proposed Katherine Drexel construction project.
Pull that one.
Pull 3.14.
Yes, sir.
3.15, consider budgeting $12,500,000 to air-condition 17 middle and high school gymnasiums at Truman Early Childhood and Truman Early Childhood Education Center.
You pull it.
Okay. Pull 3.15. 3.16, revised project listing $126 million of bond issuances. 3.17, general fund budget revision request, in-school suspension facilitator. 3.18, permission to grant approval of assignment of oil and gas lease on Section 16 property at Enslebut. 3.19, approval to advertise request for qualifications for architectural and engineering services for projects of minor complexity. 3.20, approval of bid for Milton Elementary Middle School Q row project. 3.21, approval to advertise and accept qualifications, selection of architectural firm for Westside Elementary Temporary Modular Building Site at Scott Middle School. 3.22, approval to advertise and accept proposals, temporary buildings, RFP 19-17. 3.23, approval to advertise and accept proposals, the development and lease of Section 16 property, 3323 Ambassador Caffrey Parkway, the former Logan's Roadhouse. 3.24, approved bid award, lubricance engine oil bid, number 16-17. 3.25, resolution number 11-16-1890, issuance of $78 million limited tax revenue bond, Series 2016.
Pull that, please.
Pull 3.25.
And 26, please.
3.26, resolution 11-161891, authorization of defeasance of special limited tax bonds. You want to pull that one, too? 3.26 is pulled. 3.27, approval of quotes for Acadian High hallway lights replacement. 3.28, self-funded construction fund budget revision for child nutrition service freezer building project. Number 3.29, amendment to the district school attendance administrative rule.
You pull that one.
It won't be there now, huh? I'll go back. And then, I'm going to say, is that going to be 31? Melba? Elementary grade alignment?
I'd pull that one, please.
Okay, you want, that's going to be 3.30? 3.1, we're going to pull that one. 3.31, renaming of policy file BH to BE and related policy revisions. And then, 3.32 is going to be general fund budget revision for additional assistant principals position.
Mr. President, I move that we approve all action items, not pull.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms...
Morrison.
Ms. Morrison, I'm sorry. I get the Ms. mixed up. That we approve all items that are not pulled. Any questions or comments from members of the audience? Members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Nine-four, none against.
Okay, motion carried. The first item that was pulled that we will...
Mr. Angel.
I'm sorry.
With your permission, would you and the board consider acting on 3.25 and 3.26 while we have our bonding attorney present?
All right, you want to move that up? No, 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 no. Just click on it. Yeah, we'll take 3.25 and 3.26. I don't think...
All right, Mr. Angel.
No one objects?
Ms. Angel, I move that the board approve resolution number 11-16-1890, providing, authorizing the issuance of a $78 million limited tax revenue bond, Series 2016.
I'm second that.
Okay, second by Mr. Lachale. Do we have any questions or comments concerning the motion from members of the public? Members of the board? Yes, sir. Mr. Centeni?
Mr. Guidry, I might understand that this is kind of a backup plan in case the USDA application doesn't get approved?
Actually, this allows us to move forward with the closing once we get the okay from USDA, so it's the next step in that process.
And how do we, what happens if the USDA, I know we must be getting pretty close up against our available cash flow for building the high school. What happens if the USDA application gets denied?
It's already been obligated. It's more a matter of timing. In other words, we're trying to get it in by the end of December in order to recognize the existing rate. Our concern is that the rates are on the uptick. So, right now, our goal is to try to get it closed by then. If, for some reason, the board were to decide we would not proceed with that application, we would not continue, then we would go to the conventional markets and sell bonds through that process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on 3.25.
Nine-four, none against.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 3.26.
Mr. President, I move that the board approves resolution number 11-16-1891, providing for the defeasance of certain outstanding maturities of limited tax revenue bond, Series
We have a motion, Mr. Centeni seconded by Mr. Lachale, that we authorize the defeasance of specific limited tax bond, Series 2012A. Any comments from members of the public? From members of the board? Yes, sir.
I pulled it just because I don't think that taxing authorities and governing bodies discuss public finance often enough and in detail enough for everyone to understand exactly what's happening here. Mr. Guidry, would you give us a brief overview of what we're doing by defeating these bonds?
The parity provisions of the limited tax bonds that have been sold, as well as the one that we're looking at, as far as the USDA application, requires a 1.35 times coverage. In other words, our tax collections have to be 1.35 at any point in time, 1.35 times the debt service, what our debt payments are. So, in looking at USDA application and mapping out the debt amortization, there are, there's a time period in which we do not meet that 1.35 coverage. So, in order to accommodate or in order to get us to that... So in order to accommodate or in order to get us to that point where we do reach it, by defeating, I think it's approximately $60,000 of bonds, and by purchasing the U.S. government securities, putting it in escrow to pay those particular bonds off, those that are specified in the resolution, they're basically no longer considered in that calculation when we take that approach or use that methodology. So by providing that these funds be placed in escrow through investments in U.S. securities, these particular bonds are removed from that calculation and allows us to meet the 1.35 factor. We have Mr. Jerry Osborne here with us, our bond consul. Ms. Osborne, I don't know if you want to add to that or clarify that.
I agree, Mr. Osborne.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Nine for, none against.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to name the place because that would be, I think, not ethical advertising, but now you have time to go get that shrimp po' boy before you go to New Orleans. So you may take leave if you wish. Okay. 3.1 is the next item, we're going to go back to the original. Settle on the agenda. 3.1 is to consider approval of the rezoning plan.
Mr. President, I move that the board approves rezoning plan three for 2017, 2018.
We have a second by Mr. Bruceard, that we in fact approve rezoning plan three for the 17, 18 year. Any questions or comments from many members of the audience? Yes, sir. Come up here, give us your name and your comment.
Hello, my name is Todd Ordland. I've missed a lot of these workshops. I wasn't aware of them ahead of time. I'm not sure how word got out about the workshops for parents inputs, input on where their child will be going to school next year. I've been come to a couple of the board meetings and trying to keep up with it. I just recently found out about revision three. I find out revision three, where I live, it's going to put my child going four, about four and a half miles away from home, when his closest school is half that, about two, two and a half miles away. I don't understand if this is supposed to be reducing child travel time and bus transportation, why he is going to a school twice as far away as where he lives next to. I understand that it depends on so many students that are going to the school and whatnot, but I've seen this third revision, and where he is, where we live, is kind of at an angle. And it makes no sense why my child will have to go twice as far next year. So I'm just looking for an answer for that. I don't agree with the third revision.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Mr. President, I know this is a comment, not question. However, will you allow maybe an answer? Because I'd like to ask the gentleman a few questions and then maybe if Mr. Hefner could respond to his question. But first, I'd like to ask, what two schools are you referring to? Which one's closest and which one's farther?
Currently, my child is going to Ernest Gallay. The school closest to us, Ernest Gallay is about 3.8 miles, I've checked it. Plantation is 2.2. Katherine Drexel, where he's zoned for next year, is about four and a half miles away, going south. And that seems to be where the confusion is. And when I look at the elementary school map, where we fall in our neighborhood, I don't understand, it doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
Why we're going twice as far away when there's something closer.
Hopefully, Mr. Hefner will have some kind of response to that, but before, while he's coming up, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask him one more question. You mentioned that you were not privy to the many meetings we've had in the past. Could I ask you, how did you hear about tonight's meeting?
Checking out the school board's website.
Thank you.
I try to do that often, but that's the only way I heard about it.
Mr. Hefner, I don't know if you heard it all, but thank you.
204 Thiruvadi Parkway. Mike Hefner, Geographic Plan and Demographic Services. If I understand the area correctly, that was the area in which we've been having some movement between plans one, two, and three, trying to balance out the capacity issues between Galette, GT London, Drexel, and Plantation. So that line has been a little fluid as our numbers have gotten better and better over the last several months. That is about the only configuration that I've been able to come with, come up with that actually will make the numbers work as far as capacity goes. And it is a capacity issue. If it wasn't, believe me, I would have loved to have put that area, particularly in Plantation, because it is a lot closer. But right now, until something is done with regards to perhaps a new elementary school, which the board has been talking about doing, that will probably relieve some things where we can get kids a little bit closer to the school, but for right now, it's a capacity issue. And that's why the line is where the line is on that one.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else want to address the board? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, come on up.
How you doing today? My name is Alton Guidry. And I was wanting to give a few comments about the rezoning issues that we have coming into effect in the near future. First of all, I want to thank the committee for then voiced our concerns today. I want to start off by speaking as the voices of hundreds that could not make the meeting today for whatever reasons, work after school activities, kids, transportation, et cetera, whatever that case may be. I'm a product of a middle-class, lower-class family and understand the importance of education and stand for nothing less than top-notch education. I was asked today to speak by one of my colleagues today concerning this rezoning issue that's going to be happening in the near future. I'm aware of the reason why the school boards is considering the rezoning take place. It's going to be to give the parents a better opportunity to be closer to their kids. It was never an issue in the past, so one of my questions is why now? I am aware of the low numbers at certain schools and the issues that we are facing concerning the low numbers at these schools today. But I can assure you that rezoning would not fix the problems we have at these schools. It may fix the number situations in terms of quantity, but not the quality of education. The problem lies further than just the rezoning, it's the lack of resources and opportunities that would not be offered to our schools once this rezoning takes place. It comes to no disbelief that we are considering this a form of segregation of schools, not from the aspect of race or ethnicity, but in the form of resources and opportunities from one side of town to the next. We have had, faced a lot of these issues in the past by having the schools of choice, which has done a lot of wonders for our kids today. We see that these kids are living in communities where schools were not thriving, that was given the opportunity to send schools that was actually thriving and has the best of resources. And we have seen a lot of, a large amount of kids thrive in these schools. If this rezoning was to happen, many of these students that once was given the opportunities would be guided back to communities where these schools are not thriving. I understand the issues at hand, and we'll give a few suggestions, I'm assuming, considering this rezoning, right? The first suggestion is to incorporate a warm learning environment across all zones of Lafayette, and we can do this by making sure that all hardware and professionals are present in these classrooms, Promethean boards, IEP meetings, and et cetera. From voicing my concerns with a few other teachers and other people in the communities, they had an issue with the schools not being of a quality school like the other side of town. I understand the budget that each school has, but it's hard to accept that these classrooms across Lafayette Parish are not equally yoked across the parish. The concerns that the Youngsville and Bruceard area is experiencing are the same concerns that we're experiencing with the schools on the north side and the south side of town. A second suggestion is that we update the schools that are already present in these communities in terms of outside and inside presentations. A lot of the teachers and a lot of the parents in those communities was a little disappointed with the presentations of the schools. So I told them and I promised them that I'd bring this up to the meetings with the board today. Let's remember that these communities has educated our past generations in the past, and let's treat them with the dignity and respect that they do deserve as far as their presentation goes, right? To forget or disregard these schools is saddening. Let's assure that our students, let's assure to our students that we do care for their safety and provide them with a comfortable, updated environment that will make learning comfortable and very enjoyable for them. Right, and the third suggestion that I have here is the concerns for the community rather than, is that the communities, that the board listen to the communities rather than just put their voices to the side. A lot of parents and a lot of people in the communities felt as if they're, they wouldn't attend the meetings because their voices didn't make any difference in the meetings. The reason why many stated that they do not come to these meetings is because their voices are normally ignored. So I say to the rezoning that it's not, I'm not, I'm not a fan of this rezoning because I feel that is, the education is not equal across the board, and the rezoning will cause children to be of a disadvantage on the north side of town. I strongly suggest that we think about this rezoning, but sounding as if we're a little bit too late when it comes down to this rezoning. Not to assure that just one side of the town thrives, but both sides of the town thrives. My kids live in the McComb Vize area, and they were zoned for the Broadmore Elementary School. When the rezoning is going to come into place, my kids are going to be rezoned for JW Falk. It's not just my concern, but there's a lot of the other parents in the communities concerned also that they're going to be coming from an A-rated school to a failing rated school, and we was very concerned about that. I'm not sure, I know the issues do go a little bit deeper than just the school itself. It has a lot to do with the parental involvement, the community itself, I am aware of that. But what are some of the issues as far as, what are some of the things that the board can do to assure that our kids that's going to be taking from the A schools and going to these other schools is going to have the best of education? Because like I said, it is a little disappointing for me to say that my kid is going to be moving from an A school to an F school. So what are some of those changes or what are some of the adjustments we're going to make in assuring that our kids are going to have top-notch education at the end of the day? I know this is a comment thing, and like the gentleman right here was saying that it's not for open discussion, but as a sense of urgency for myself, and I guess to give me a calm and spirit towards these issues right here, I would like to at least have a few answers towards assurance that my kid is going to get the best education possible with this rezoning issue that we have.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
First thing is, and I'll address you so that we don't get into a discussion, but first thing, it is, this zoning is an issue that does not entail, does not include academics. This is a capacity issue. And I speak firsthand, speaking for my district, that it is, unlike what was suggested, it is an issue when you have a school that's over capacity. Therefore, you have classrooms that are larger, more students in a classroom than you would in other areas of the parish. That does make a difference academically. I'd also like to say that this rezoning is not a last minute, and I predicted this was coming, this is not a last minute thing. Not only have we had many, many meetings that the public are invited to, but I do listen to my constituents. I had at least two meetings in my own district, town hall meetings, where I invited my constituents where we discussed rezoning, because I wanted to hear what they had to say. We do not have a slew of bad educators in this parish. So while some schools are not A and B and C rated schools, I don't believe, and the superintendent can correct me if he feels I'm wrong, I don't believe that's a direct reflection on the educators in that school building as a whole. I think that every child in this parish does have the same equal opportunity to a good education, no matter what school building they go to. Yes, some school buildings are more deplorable and conditioned than others, we get it, and we're working on that from a facilities perspective. But this rezoning issue has to do with capacity. And I think that I am definitely one of the districts in this parish that is affected the most on this issue, okay? There are over 1,000 students at Green Tland, over 1,000 students at Ernest Gallat, over 1,000 students at Milton Elementary, I can keep going, and none of these schools were built for 1,000 students. So this is a capacity issue, it's very uncomfortable, we knew it would be, but I just wanted to make the statement that, A, I do care what my constituents think, B, this is not an academic issue, this is a capacity issue. But speaking of it from an academic perspective, every child has the same ability to get a good education in this parish.
All right, let me just, let me just tack on to that, sorry. And I appreciate your concern, I mean, I think, I understand the issue. But I can assure you that the students in our schools that are lower performing, they, more attention, more resources are afforded to those students than the schools that are higher performing. In other words, we have fewer students in the class, and the experts over here could go on and on, but we just hired someone from where, Dr. Shashon, to help with our lower Acadia Parish, a special lady who's been nationally acclaimed, work at what she does to help poor performing students. So I'm convinced that we are doing everything we can for all of our students, but especially the poor performing schools.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Alton, Alton Guidry.
Alton. I'm sure if you wanted to speak with Ms. Trusculler, she's right back there in the back row. She is directly in charge of JW Falk and Alice Boucher and Karen Groh Heights Elementary School, and she'll be happy to answer any questions you have about the quality of education and her plans for making sure that all the children at your son's school is going to learn when they show up.
Okay, all right.
You would certainly be able to have more of a back and forth and get any questions you have answered with her than asking us, I would say.
All right.
Mr. Bruceard?
Mr. Guidry. We have, this has been on the table since January, and, you know, while listening to you speak, it concerns me that we just come to this now. I would, I would have urged you and urged you now to get in touch with your representative or anyone on the school board that could have answered those questions, or have not answered, find the answer to that. If there was such a concern back then, and it still is, and it's concern for every parent that want the best education for their child, but I'm sorry I missed the opportunity to speak to the group that you are representing. And since you're in that area, Mr. Shashon is a representative, either one of us could have attended and bring those questions to the board and get some answer to it. We're in the 11 hour, we're trying to make the changes because of the population shift, population growth, and I really would have loved the opportunity to address the group to try to find some of those answers.
That's fine, thank you.
Mr. Guidry, I was just gonna address you as well. I personally think that the decision to rezone Lafayette Parish is one of the best leadership decisions any governmental bodies made in this parish in a long time. And, um, I can tell you, I think in the year 2016, we've evolved as a community. Right now, this, this redistricting plan, excuse me, this redistricting plan is erasing prior zones that were based on a federally mandated, um, federally mandated requirements to divide up our parish by race. And that was as a result of, in the past, decisions for funding, and I say in the past, fifty, sixty years ago. Decisions were made by leadership at the time based on race, which we know is wrong. And over the past fifty, sixty, seventy years, our community is now at the point in the year 2016 where we don't have to do that anymore. The decisions that this board makes, we make decisions based off of need and resources. It's not based off of the color of people's skin. And, so that's the first comment on that. The second comment is about accountability. You're right, you're absolutely right. It's your job and, and the, and the public's job to hold this board accountable. And it's our job to make sure that the children attending JW Falk still have the same opportunity for resources, the same qualified teachers, the same opportunity for textbooks that the kids at Broadmoor have. And we need you to hold us accountable to that. And if you find that that's not the case, you have to let us know. And we, that is our job, is to make sure that all kids in this parish have equal access to a good education. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Ms. Marson?
I've heard a couple times where constituents and parents said that they're afraid to come and, uh, voice their opinion because they feel that they will not be heard or we wouldn't consider what they think. And I really want the community to know is we want your input. We wanna hear from you and your concerns. It helps us make decisions. So, please don't feel that we do not wanna hear what you have to say or you're afraid to voice your opinion because you feel your voice will not be heard. That is incorrect. We are not that type of board. We wanna hear from you. We wanna hear your concerns. It helps us make decisions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, uh, Dr. Chassot?
Mr. Guidry, I'm gonna talk to you like it's just me and you in here. So, y'all forgive me for a second. I'm gonna make you a promise that your child, how many kids you have, two, one? Five. Five. I make you a promise, all five, if they go to Falk, will receive a quality education. Quality. And I'm gonna tell you why. Previous to me getting on the board, it caused me a lot of problems 'cause JW Falk was right there. I was born and raised, that's where, that's where we all lived. I, I understand JW Falk had a lot of problems before. This entire board is, when I say completely committed, we've, we've given JW Falk and other schools, what we call emerging schools, those have been lower performing, every thing that they have possibly needed and more. And what's taking place now that we're being sure of is that there were, there was a real nice lady who took the time to come to the school. And she's actually over Karen Crow Heights, JW Falk, and Alice Boucher. And those three emerging schools, she came from a school that was an F school and she helped turn it into an A school in two years. Previous to that, she was at Eunice Elementary and she took the time to turn that school from an F school to a A school in two years. So, what I'm promising you is gonna take place, see, 'cause my kid goes to one of those three schools. He goes to Alice Boucher. And I wouldn't have my child at any other school simply for this. They're taking the time to make sure that everyone's on the same page, everyone's on board. If you wanna be there, cool. If you don't, uh, we'll find somewhere else for you to be. It's the teacher's job to teach, just like at, at the other schools. But what they're making sure of is that there are certain things called standards that the state tests us on. And what they're making sure is they're addressing each standard. 'Cause before in the past, for some strange reason, at some of those schools, they weren't being addressed properly. Or maybe even teachers didn't know that, hey, look, they're gonna test me on this and the book doesn't cover that. So even though I covered the entire book, then I didn't address seven of the standards that that kid will be tested on to see if they know what they're supposed to know to matriculate to the second or third grade. So what they're making sure of is that they're making sure that they have the proper books that meet those standards. And then when those standards are exhausted, they're pulling supplemental material to make sure that all of those standards are addressed. You can't just follow a book, a book blindly. Because then, I don't know if we're meeting everything. The people that are in charge over there, Ms., Ms. Rose, Ms. White, Ms. Hicks, um, Ms. Ryaners, Ms. Trussclaire, they understand what's gonna be tested and what that kid has to know to do well. They're not teaching the test, but they just understand. So, actually currently, those kids are currently, your kid, taken right now and put in that school, will probably receive an even better education right now because they're addressing what needed to be addressed. The problem is, we're so far behind because it wasn't addressed in the past. So, they're gonna hit the ground running, those kids are gonna learn. So, standards are meeting the books, the books meeting the curriculum, everything aligns properly. I promise you, your kid will receive a, your kids will receive a quality education. I'm promising you that. That's why I got on the board. I'm promising you that. Every person on this board is making sure what Falk needs, they're getting. Karen Crow Heights, they're getting. Alice Boucher, they're getting. If that group meets again, just call me. I'm gonna come explain to them. I'll ask Ms. Ryaners and Ms. Trussclaire, Ms. Marcel to come to explain what's taking place so you can rest assured. It's tough because I understand the stigma with the school, but we're, we're negating that. We've washed that away. Isn't it a double-digit gain as of, as of right now? I mean, the scores have jumped tremendously. Granted, we were far behind. Now we gotta catch up. But those kids, they're rolling right now. And they, your kid is gonna get a better education and be ready for middle school wherever they go, better than other kids in the parish right now. I'm promising you that, okay?
Alright, thank you. Uh, is this related to this topic, sir? Okay. Yeah, let, let me, where, Mr. Guidry, I think what you just heard is the public's comment do not fall on deaf ears. We, we, we listen, we listen. Yes, sir, come on up.
Uh, my name is John Newman. Uh, I'm part of a after-school program, uh, in Azalea Park, we call it New Hope. Work with about, uh, forty at-risk kids. And I prepared some, from statements for tonight and, uh, I dutifully left them on my kitchen table. So, uh, so now I'll, I'll just talk, uh, ad hoc here. But first of all, I want to say I appreciate, uh, what the school board's done. Uh, the last year, you guys have done a tremendous job, um, in terms of working together, solving problems. Uh, I've had the opportunity to talk to two or three of you. And I know y'all, you aren't doing this for the pay. Uh, you care about our kids, you care about our school, and, uh, I really appreciate, uh, what y'all, what you guys do. I'm, I'm here to reiterate a, a concern that I expressed last time. And, uh, that my concern is regarding, uh, having concentrations of poverty, uh, at schools. And, uh, and it was mentioned that, um, with Brown versus Board of Education, changes were made based on race. Uh, now we can't make changes based on race, we do them social economically. What, one thing that we do know in terms of socioeconomics is the socioeconomic status of a child is highly correlated to their performance. Uh, there's all kinds, it's true in Lafayette, it's true in Detroit, it's true across America. Um, kids' socioeconomic status, where mom and dad live, their income, it's gonna affect their school performance, um, which is unfortunate. That is the single most factor correlated to a child's success. The second factor that is most correlated to a child's success is the student population of the school. The higher the student population of a school is, uh, correlated to poverty, and we're talking poverty. And that represents twenty percent of our city's population, twenty percent of our, our children in Lafayette are in poverty. But I believe it's closer to forty or fifty percent of our actual student population lives in poverty. When, when you have high concentrations, and actually high concentration would be anything over fifty percent, students' performance goes down. So, for example, if you have a high minority school, a high, um, poverty school, uh, tho- those students, sixty percent of them will perform below average on, on standardized tests nationwide. And we have, we have five decades of research on this. So, we know this. And, uh, so if you have more than fifty percent of your kids living in poverty, sixty percent of those kids will do below average. If you have a, uh, a middle-class school, if it's more than half, half of your students are not living in poverty, only a less than one-quarter of those students will perform below average. When, when children in poverty are put in middle-class schools, there's a sixty-eight percent more likelihood that they'll go to college. This is stuff that we know, it's documented, it's there. There's, uh, a hidden agenda effect. So that when, it, when you're dealing in high-poverty schools, when Johnny's behind and he doesn't wanna learn, Johnny can impact the Tommy next to him, so Tommy doesn't wanna learn. And all of a sudden, you get a death spiral of, uh, unacademic activity happening. So, that's my concern. And from the research that I've seen, it doesn't matter how much you spend in programming. You can spend lots of money in programming, uh, but you're not gonna move the reading needle very much. You're not gonna move the, the math needle very much. I've seen studies where you can add additional programming three to five times the cost and it's not gonna move the needle much. The thing that's gonna move the needle most for education, the thing you move it most is get mom and dad out of poverty. The second thing that's gonna move the, the needle the most is get the, the kids out of a school that's high poverty. So if we want, if we want our kids to succeed, we've gotta figure out how to put them in successful environments. So, that's, that's what I wanna share with you. Um, I, I have, uh, a couple of research papers I'd like to leave with y'all. I mean, it's pretty well documented. Um, I know that we're saving three million dollars on, uh, transportation costs. Uh, and I know we want to maximize our school, uh, situations. But I wouldn't encourage you to not look at those transportation costs as a savings when you're concentrating kids in poverty schools. Because then you're gonna have to figure out new ways to help those kids become successful. Um, sometimes we can be penny-wise and pound foolish. I don't know if you're gonna be able to spend enough money on education to make up for the deficit of concentrating high-poverty, high-needs kids in school. I'm just gonna let you know this, with our little program, with the kids that we see, by age four, the kids are eighteen months behind developmentally. Eight, they're eighteen months behind, so they're almost two years behind when they get to kindergarten. By the time they get fourth grade, based on standardized tests in Louisiana, statewide, by fourth grade, they're three years behind their peers. So you wanna put a classroom of twenty-five kids that are three years behind in a fourth-grade classroom? I don't think that's a recipe for success. That's statewide, those are the numbers. So I, I wanna encourage you to figure out ways, the, these children can succeed. The, one of the best tools to help these kids succeed is to put them next to middle-class kids. That's been proven over and over again. I, I, I'm sharing you with my heart. Oh, I probably said things that weren't politically correct 'cause I didn't write it down. So if I did, I, I apologize. I'm just saying this because I care for the kids and I, I want you to consider this issue, maybe you haven't considered it before. My friend has, uh, one little three-page paper he could pass to each of you, and I've got one. Um, this is a, uh, annotated, annotated bibliography of about twenty research papers. Um, here's something from Ohio State.
You, you need to kind of...
And, and I'm just, I'm done. So, thank you very much for your time. I would like to leave this with you.
Alright, you, you're more than welcome to leave it. I, I just asked that, let, let's be more specific in our comments where the, the, the motion on the floor is the zoning, this particular zoning and the schools where the, our children are gonna go to.
Well, my, my concern would be to not move kids for, from, for example, from a McComb Visé to Alice Boucher. To, to not do that in particular.
Understand.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Dr. Aguilar or Mr. Craig, Ms. Samick, somebody, can you tell me, out of the thirty thousand students we have, what percentage of those students are considered poverty?
It's, um, it's almost, it's, it's a little over sixty percent.
It's over sixty percent. So, you got your majority of your students considered poverty. How do you take students that are considered to be living in poverty and put them in a middle-class setting when the majority of them are living in poverty? Thank you.
Okay, uh, anyone else wanna make a comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is, uh, Bridget Durham. I just wanted to address the board and first of all, thank you guys. Um, I have attended two workshops and a town hall meeting. And I just wanna say thank you because I do feel that you guys listened, responded, and took the actions that I, I had and the, the feelings and the, everything I felt about the zoning board into consideration. Um, I wanna thank you guys for taking the time to consider the children and how y'all understood how delicate a situation this was. And I just wanted to say thank you. I do feel that my address, my concerns were addressed, um, they were answered. And y'all, y'all gave me the opportunity to have a voice and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate your comments. Yes, ma'am. Sometimes the, the shortest speech is, is the best.
Okay, well, good, I'm gonna be really quick. Um, again, thank you so much, Mr. Hefner, the board. I agree that, that this has been a long time coming and I'm so glad that we are rezoning. Something that's come up in the last week that I wish you would consider, and I'm not sure, but I think it should be considered before the rezoning, is moving the fifth graders back to middle schools. They were, research shows that they're better off at an elementary. And I know we're maximizing efficiency, but you're asking students and parents to move again. And more importantly, you're asking teachers to pack up class, same teachers that were involved... Uh, well, I don't know, I mean, maybe it should be.
Well, it's not.
Okay, well, and I, I don't need to say it again, but I, I, with rezoning, maybe it should be before the rezoning is looked at because of the size. Okay, that's it.
Alright. Any, any other comments concerning the rezoning? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We all, we kinda all commented, but any board comments on the rezoning? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Nine, four, none against.
Okay, yes, sir.
I did not wanna make any comments before the vote, but if I could just have a twenty seconds. Uh, just wanna say that this, uh, was a really, uh, really big thing we just voted on. As the lady said, it was a long time coming. I wanna thank, uh, everyone who, uh, did give their feedback up until right now, tonight. And I wanna say that we are, as a school system, and I know Dr. Aguilar will, uh, do everything he can to make this as painless and, uh, successful as possible. So, thank you.
Alright, item three point two is to consider approving the name for the non-traditional school. And Mr. Kinesik, you act, and we pull that item.
I did, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Broussard.
Mr. Broussard?
Thank you, Ms. Kinesik. I got a question before, before three-two and three-three is combined. Before I make my comment or my suggestion, I'm gonna ask Dr. Aguilar if...
Well, I don't wanna make a motion 'cause I don't wanna, but the selection we got up there, it's not in my best interest. Would somebody make a motion and would you discuss it?
Do you want to discuss it?
Well, I, well...
I move that we name the school after Mr. Edward Sam.
Yes. I second it.
Okay. Motion in the second that we named the non-traditional school after Mr. Ed Sam, former school board member whom I was very close to. Okay. You want to comment, Mr. Broussard?
Yes. Dr. Aguilar, we want to move the non-traditional school to W.D. Smith. Are we changing the name of W.D. Smith to something else or just the component of this, of the campus?
No, sir. We're not changing the name of W.D. Smith. That, that Career Center, Career School is still going to be there. There's a wing there with about 10 classrooms. That will be the non-traditional high school environment.
So, the damn W.D. Smith is going to still, still being exist? That was, I, I was going to make the motion to change that wing from the name suggested to Mr. Sam, but Ms. Kinesic did, and I certainly appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments concerning the motion from the public? More from the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Yes, sir.
Nine, four, none against.
Yes, sir.
So, at this point, I'm, I'm assuming that the intent of the board was that we are naming the middle-high school, non-traditional school, Edward J. Sam. If that's the intent of the board, we're, we're good with that. Yes. Thank you.
And I think Mr. Sam would be proud.
Because it'll, it'll open up for, is it seven through, seven through 12 student population?
Well, maybe we should have specified that, like, I don't know if it's going to be, you know, Edward J. Sam accelerated school or Edward J. Sam High School. Maybe you can come to us with...
We can come back with a recommendation. Yep.
Mr. Broussard, you want to, does that satisfy your pulling item 3.3, or do you want to...
Yes. I, I thought the two of them went together, so I just needed a clear explanation, and that satisfied the board agenda items to my lack, and I think I pulled both of them. And I certainly appreciate the board supporting Mr. Edward D. Sam as far as recognizing the work he's done in all the years he's been in education, the past, school board president, school board representative. I think he's done it for 15, 20 years. I think, you know, I think he, and, and educate. I think the community deserves, deserved this and certainly appreciate it. Thank you all, board members.
Well, Mr. Broussard, you want to make a motion that we approve 3.3 because we didn't approve it. It was pulled. You want me to make it for you, Mr. Broussard?
Motion to approve, say what, 3.3?
Yes, sir.
The non-traditional school location, W.D. Smith, Mary Baker Center facilities?
I'll second that.
Mr. Lachey, second. You had a comment, Mr. Lachey? Any questions or comments from members of the audience? Members of the board? Okay. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Okay. Motion carries. Let me, let me digress just a minute. Let me just mention that Dr. Shanae Morris was also, Morrison, I get it mixed up, Mary, I'm sorry, was also one of the top 20, under 40, and, and Dr. Shanae is a community development coordinator for the Lafayette Council of Governments, and I know you and Purvis are very proud. And yes, Dr. Shanae is a lady. And speaking of ladies, another, another lady on the top 20, under 40 is, what's her first name? Marie Centini. Proud husband right here to my left.
Could, could they come up with a group for us old people?
Well, I thought if, if...
Dinner before 4:30.
I thought if somebody like me were to, were to get on that, on that list, they'd probably have to have 7,000 over 70. Don't think I'd make the cut. Okay. We're going to move on to item 3.10, which is approval for architect for Como High Performing Arts Academy Building. Mr. Centini?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the architectural firm of Architects Beasley-Moliere for the design of the Como High Performing Arts Building.
I'll second.
We have any questions or comments from any members of the public? Any questions or comments from members of the board? Mr. Centini?
I just wanted to hear, Mr. Bordelone, Dr. Aguilar, someone explain the difference in the interviews. Perhaps you could review what was so impressive about their, their interview, because since they were, since they weren't the highest score on the evaluation. I'm just curious.
Yes, sir. I'm going to let Mr. Bordelone respond. I, I was, I didn't sit in on the interviews.
Thank you.
Good mor, good evening, members of the board. Kyle Bordelone, Director of Planning and Facilities. As one of the four committee members, I can only speak for myself on the, on the oral interview committee. I was more impressed with, with the firm of Architects Beasley-Moliere and their consulting firm who had a lot of experience with theater design and, and brought into the mix a, a great wealth of knowledge. So, that, that's my take.
Dr. Chasson, did you have a question?
I was, my question was just, so it isn't with the, the highest total that we were mandated to go with, it still can be just a recommendation from, from staff that we're going to go with the second place?
Yes. According to the RFP documents, yes, sir. That's the case.
I would make the point, Dr. Chasson, that, that the scores were close. You know, it's not, you know, it's not like the firm that scored 272 is being recommended. We're talking about someone who finished in second place by six points out of 350. So, if it wasn't the RFP, I don't know that that's completely out of the ordinary.
Mr. Hidalgo? Finished, Dr. Chasson, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bordelone, you, you mentioned that you certainly were speaking on behalf of yourself as one of the evaluators or any of the other evaluators here, and also if, if, if it wasn't by score, which it wasn't, I'm sure there was some discussion as to how you chose the firm you did. So, I mean, what were the other opinions?
Mr. Hidalgo, I'm sorry. I don't remember their exact opinions. I think some of them felt the same way I did about the presentation that was made. So, again, I can only speak for myself, and, and I don't see any of the other committee members here.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Dr. Chasson?
So, Mr. Bordelone, my question is, at what point, whenever someone scores higher than someone else, and it was your personal opinion that the second place had met a little better of the criteria or heard more of the thing, you heard more of the things that you would prefer to hear when it comes to building these structures? What's the process after that point, after those discussions are had? What's the process in that committee meeting with four evaluators? Someone makes a recommendation or like a motion, and then it's seconded, and then it's voted on? What's the actual process at that point?
The actual process is the, the scores, each individual committee member writes down, which was included in your packet, the oral interviews sheet. Each member ranks the architectural firms. We tally those up, and the firm with the highest ranking after the oral interview is the, the person who gets the recommendation. It's kind of similar to when people submit their resumes for a job. You can, you can look at the resumes, and you can determine who's got the qualifications that you would like to interview. Then you bring in the top candidates for interview. You do an oral interview, and some who may look great by their resume may not be the person you really want, because you may do some speaking in the oral interview or find out some things that impress you more. So, it's, it's a very similar process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bordelone.
Ms. Morris?
So, Mr. Bordelone, so you took the score from the evaluation, and you added that to the score from the oral interviews?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I was going to say, because that's not adding up.
No.
All right. So, what, or what weight did the oral interviews have, and where, where is that determination spelled out? Like, is it determined before the process is gone through as far as what weight the oral interviews are going to hold?
As I recall from the, from the RFP process that's, that's shown in the RFP itself, we state that the, the top four candidates will be determined through the scoring matrix, and it's after the oral interviews that a final recommendation will be made based on the oral interviews.
Mr. Kinesic?
Fellow board members, the process he's talking about, if you look at the attachment, it's titled RFQ 1117. He's got a page seven at the bottom. It talks about how basically the scores, they have to take a minimum of three of the highest-ranked firms and then conduct oral interviews. So, you can kind of think of that as the clearinghouse. Then from the oral interviews, it's kind of like a new competition. Through the oral, oral interviews, they select the highest-ranked firm as a result of the oral interviews and forward that recommendation to the board. So, this, this is one of those examples of a objective process followed by a subjective process. And, you know, it just goes back to our procurement processes, and if we want to, maybe in some things we want subjectivity, in some things we don't. I could see a justification on, like he was mentioning, just like two resumes may look great, or one resume may look better. When you're talking about architectural firms and you're talking about something that has a, and this is probably not the right term, but an artistic component to it, that maybe there's something important in an interview process that you want to capture.
I have a couple of questions. I, I, I did extensive research on the, on the, on the RFQ, and I, I, I feel that there were some questions on there or some scoring on there that, that gives certain architects unfair advantage. One example would be, how much work have you done for the school board? Well, if you've done a lot of work for the school board, your points go up, and then if your points go up, you get work for the school board. So, it all, it almost is like a pyramid situation where fewer and fewer would be selected. But, and, and I had meetings with Dr. Aguilar, and I think we could, we could improve the, the system, the matrix. But the, Mr. Bordelone, you mentioned the RF, RFQ process. One of the things that it, which I'd never know, I had never noticed, never, never known until I read it in detail, but it said that there would be a committee formed and that the committee would, would rate the architects and then have an oral interview. But the RFQ also states that one of the members of the committee will be appointed by the president of the board. Now, I've been here 23 months, and I've yet to have an opportunity to appoint anyone. What, has that had, what's changed since I read that?
Nothing has changed, Mr. Angell. That was an oversight on our part in our expediency to try and get this project moving forward. I met with the superintendent, asked him what members he wanted to have on the committee. He gave me those names, and we moved forward with it.
The other question that I have is, was any part of, of this process public? Were, 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 were any meetings of you and/or the board public, published like, like we have meetings, like, you know, were they public meetings? Or did you just, everybody took a sheet of paper, went to one of the offices, filled it out, and came back?
No, sir. They were not public.
Okay. I'll reserve the rest of my questions for later, but I have some more.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this will matter much, but I do want to say that I've sat in in the past because I reached out and asked to sit in on some of these interviews, and I'll tell you that, as Mr. Kinesic said, they're very objective. It's very, it's almost identical to what happened with the insurance third-party administrator we hired, and you were part of that process, because we did it through the insurance committee, where they were scored based on a packet of information, and then they came and presented, the top three came and presented to the board, and the top scores were considered, but it wasn't the final determination. And I assure you that this is the process they're using, although I agree with your concerns, there are some tweaks that could be made. This was, in my opinion, a legitimate process.
I, I think the process is right. I think, I think Eric hit, hit the nail on the head. A lot of objectivity and some subjectivity. I also want to point out that I think the firm that was selected was the best qualified firm to do this job. The firm that was selected, in my opinion, is the only firm, as, which is so aptly mentioned on that RFQ, that did a black box, that type of auditorium, acoustical structure, from that office. They did it from their office. I don't think very many people in Lafayette have done acoustical auditoriums from their office. They had a lot of subs, maybe, but that firm did it from their office. It was right there at UL. So, I, I do think that the best firm was chosen, because they had experience, and they've done that kind of work from their address. Any more comments? I've spoken enough. All right.
Nine, four, none against.
Okay. Motion carries. The next item pulled was to consider grade span configuration for proposed Catherine Drexel construction project. Dr. Chasson, you act, and we pull it.
I didn't want it to pass without a, without a separate vote, but I wasn't prepared to make a, an actual motion on it.
Ms. Morris?
I move that we keep the current Drexel Elementary as a K-35, and the to-be-built new elementary school also as a pre-K-35.
Mr. Hidalgo, second? Second by Mr. Hidalgo. Dr. Chasson, you want discussion? All right. Any, any comments from, or questions from members of the audience? Members of the board?
I have one question for...
Mr. Kinesic?
Are we considering allocating any of these funds to renovate, improve, or do anything at the existing Catherine Drexel? Because I know there was some concern based on the, the age of the facility, and the answer could be yes or no. I'm just curious if, because if we are, I think we need to modify this to allow for that.
So, I hadn't, hadn't thought specifically about budgeting, but it is possible we could look at some improvements to the existing Catherine Drexel. We have $26 million. Depending on the design of the building and the footprint and things like that, we may have some money. So, it might be better to expand the permissible use of the $26 million.
Any other questions?
Someone's going to have to help jog... If, um, someone's gonna have to help jog my memory. I was speaking with, with one of you guys before the meeting and if we, if we space it out or if we extend the... Someone mentioned building a school for cheaper. I don't remember who I, who I spoke with. My apologies, guys.
Uh, I remember Ms. Sonia saying that there were some plans, that we have, we have, we own plans or specifications?
Okay. So, my, my question is, I know we're allocating the money. That's, that's one thing. It's not saying, "Hey, look, we're gonna build a $26 million school." But if we could possibly, um, I think, I think the mention was for a few million dollars more, which sounds real easy, uh, we could possibly build two schools for about a $30 million price, uh, because some other ones were built in Ascension Parish for 15 or 16 million. If we could possibly reach out to Ascension, just to simply ask, I've got no problem allocating the money, but if we can build two schools for a few million dollars more, then that would serve a much greater purpose.
Absolutely. Dr. Shasson, Joe Craig, Kyle Bordalon, Eric Crozier, and Wayne Domene and I went to Ascension Parish Friday of last week. We toured some of their schools. We have some ideas about cost effectiveness. They did build several elementary schools several years ago. Uh, their capacity is 600 students. We're proposing a slightly larger footprint, 750 students, but they did, they do build their elementary schools for, at that time, for $16 million.
Okay.
So we're gonna look closely at how Ascension is building their facilities and try to maximize the use of that money.
Mr. Lachale?
Yeah, it was myself and Dr. Shasson talking before the meeting and i, i, if that would be the case, with some of the zoning issues we have with Alice Boucher, JW Falk, that area, we could actually build one, say, north of Johnson Street, one south of Johnson Street, if you wanna use that as a line. But like he says, just a few million more. I never thought I'd ever speak in terms of a few million more, but for a few million more, we may be able to accomplish seating capacity in two different areas of the parish. And I don't wanna say north and south, it can be east and west.
Ms. Morris?
All right. So I understand we're discussing the, the budget, potential use of the budget, but the motion is actually whether or not we're gonna keep the current Drexel as a K-35 because previous discussions were whether we were gonna make it a pre-K to one versus, and separating it out. Um, so I think that discussions regarding the budget will have to come back, um, at a later time because the motion itself is just on the, how we're going to, uh, maintain Drexel with a new school being built in the future.
Any other questions or comments?
Did I? Yeah, I did. Dr. Aguilar, just for the record, could you tell me who went with that trip again?
Yes, sir. Um, Kyle Bordalon drove, I was in the truck, Joe Craig, Eric Crozier is with, uh, uh, the firm building Southside and Wayne Domene is with Architects Southwest. So we made that trip. We spent several hours, we toured three elementary schools, we also toured their ninth grade academy, which gives me some ideas. They, they are, um, building standalone new structures on their existing high school campuses. They're educating, uh, their ninth grade core classes in this new building. They're also building in this new construction, they're building a brand-new cafeteria because of the increased enrollment in these high school campuses. So we're gonna come back to you with a report about what we learned from Ascension.
Thank you.
Dr. Aguilar, if you don't mind, could you tell us what fast food restaurants you guys stopped at along the way?
We, we did, we, we did not stop going, but we did make a stop in Baton Rouge, um, for lunch.
Thank you, expense reports for public records, Dr. Shasson.
They, they drank water and ate stale bread, Dr. Shasson.
Um, call for the vote, Madam Secretary. And while you're doing that, Madam Secretary, my compliments to your assistant tonight. Adam, okay?
Okay. Motion carries. Item 315 is to consider budgeting $12,500,000 to air condition 17 middle and high school gymnasiums as well as Truman Early Childhood Education Center. You wanna make a motion to that effect, Mr. Elroy?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, consider some budgeting $12.5 million.
I'll second.
Air-conditioned the schools. But, uh...
Madam Secretary, let's vote now.
We just, we just had a discussion about that, you gotta jump in there.
All right, Dr. Shasson?
My question is, which, which gym got taken off?
None.
Well, there were 18 the first time, there's 17.
Well, it's, it's 18 counting Truman.
Seventeen in Truman.
It's 17 plus one.
And of course, one's already been air-conditioned.
I don't know which one that is. There's still no air pumping in there yet.
But the ones that's been air-conditioned is not considered in this 12.5, right?
No.
Correct.
No, aside, it's not. My, in our conversation we had in our finance meeting, my concern was, who is last? And, and who is first and next is gonna get it done? And we've got a history of, of somehow, uh, the price that we're given is not, does not hold up. And my fear is, who is last? If we are budgeting $700,000 per, per unit or per gym versus 750, 1.5 million per that, Mr. Bordalon, I know we got some figures coming out of Northside about how we are going to, uh, how we're going to budget each gym, but some of them, some of those gyms are older than Northside and my fear is that the last one and a half won't be complete. So I, I, in your conversation with whoever's gonna be doing that, do we feel secure that the 12.5 is enough or the 13.5 should be put back on?
Uh, Mr. Broussard, we will, we will definitely stretch that funding just as far as we can make it stretch. If we do end up short, we will come back to the board, uh, to let you know, you know, where we are in the process, how many we've, how, how many gyms we've been able to air-condition and what the estimated cost is for the remainder. Um, we, we're definitely hopeful that the funding that we're approving will be adequate and we won't have to come back to the board. But we will make every effort possible to, to fit the projects within the budgeted funds.
Having said that, are we promising the board, Mr. Bordalon and Dr. Aguilar, that all 17 schools will be completed regardless of the money set aside? Because, you know, we, we, who is gonna be, who, we can always say, this school should be first, this school should be next for whatever reason, but the last one is where we gonna catch some slack about. So I, you know, I, I would, I would like to, um, this is a year something down the road before it's completed, but...
Dr. Aguilar, I'm gonna recognize you, your hand up.
Yes, yes, sir. So one of, one of our thoughts, and we've been thinking about equity and how do we do this, because it's, it's not a 12-month process, this is more than likely going to be 24 to 30 months to actually put these air-conditionings in place. One of our thoughts is to air-condition, uh, the primary gym at the high schools so that we move along, hold on, so that we move along so that every school, every side gets one air-conditioned gym. So Truman would be air-conditioned, the middle schools would be air-conditioned, then with the remaining funds, we would come back and air-condition the second gym at the high schools. We're gonna try to stretch this money as far as we can because we want all of those gyms air-conditioned. It's, it's a tricky, um, proposition you've placed us in. You know, the finance committee cut a million dollars out of this budget, um, just so, I just wanna put that out for the public record. You, you challenged us to cut a million dollars out of this budget and you want us to promise air-conditioning 18 gymnasiums. We're gonna do the best we can to do just that for the board and the community.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Why don't I make a recommendation for you, Mr. Broussard? Potential friendly recommendation is that in your motion, you include that these schools be air-conditioned in alphabetical or in reverse alphabetical order. It's an objective way, you know, it's an objective way to address the issue and then nobody can say that it was a subjective, uh, uh, appointment.
School board member height is also an objective measure.
Last name, you do.
That's my, that would be my second recommendation.
I lost that one.
I say we start with the As myself.
Yeah. Mr. Kanesic?
I have a, either a question or a suggestion. One is that we award one RFP to one contractor to install 18 air-conditioning systems so that it is planned efficiently, managed by one company, one contractor. Um, and I would require that contractor to come to us with the most cost-efficient method for the installation. Some of these schools are older than others, uh, the contractor may find that they can install some easier than others and some, you know, maybe electrical work has to be done at some projects, um, before others. But if we award a fixed-price contract that requires all 18 air-conditioning systems to be installed by a certain date, then it's up to the contractor to come to us with their proposal. And then we can evaluate them based off of their costs, their delivery dates, um, and those, those types of things, so that we put this burden back on the contractor and we're not making these decisions based off of where we want the air-conditionings first. Because I'm sure that there's some sort of efficiency, um, to putting them in certain schools before other schools.
Uh, let, Mr. Elroy, let me just, let me just comment on what he just said. I, I, I think that, that's a wonderful suggestion. I don't think that we should be held, uh, our feet to the fire and say, "Well, you know, we can do it for 15 million, but now we're gonna, now we have four left." I mean, I think, I think we need to know beforehand, what can you do, how much will it cost for you to have all of these gyms air-conditioned? And if, if it's $25 million, maybe we say, "No." I mean, let, let's just be realistic about it. We don't want somebody to come in here and, you know, sell us 12 of them and then now we're gonna have to go find another 10, 15 million dollars for the other, whatever, six or whatever it is. So, uh, that, that's a good, that's a good suggestion, Eric, I really agree with that. Mr. Broussard?
I was just asking a question. You're recommending that one contractor handle all 18 jobs?
Yes, sir, I am.
By whatever means, they, if they wanna sub them out to somebody else, that's, that's up to them.
That's exactly right. We hold one company accountable.
But if, if, if that one contractor is awarded all 18 jobs and they decide to do it themselves, we may be here for quite some time.
Not if we make it a contractual requirement to finish by a certain date.
But we are going to put time limit on it to...
We can put liquidated damages in the contract that says, "If you're not finished by this date, you owe us. You have to pay us X amount of dollars a day." There's a lot of things you can do in contracting to make sure that we're protected.
What did? Dr. Shasson and then Mr. Bordalon?
I agree with Mr. Kanesic. It may be worthwhile for these, for any of these contractors to see that based upon 18 gyms times whatever cost breakdown we get from Mr. Bordalon, that they may be making 300 grand per gym, 150 per gym, that times 18 gyms, it may be worthwhile for them to actually get it done. And then, uh, my second point, uh, is, uh, uh, Mr. Broussard, I agree with you. Out of all of the gymnasiums, there's one that has three and four-year-olds and then all of the rest are middle schools and high schools. So I completely agree with you. I, I, I know people may be thinking that, "Oh, well, it's in your district," but that just makes perfect sense that we, that that be the very first gym to get completed with four-year-olds in it. And then, at that point, the kids that are already currently dealing with it will just have to deal with it for a few extra months, hopefully. So I would actually, would prefer for you to put it in your, in your actual recommendation, that that be the first gym, just so that, or we can ask staff, but middle schools and high schoolers, they'll be second. The babies come first.
Uh, Mr. Bordalon, let me, I'm breaking my, Mr. Bordalon.
Uh, members of the boards, I've, I've put a little thought into this and I, I just, it's just a suggestion. Uh, we have 18 gymnasiums to deal with. Uh, my suggestion is that we, um, decide first how many packages we would like to put out. And we could put out three packages of six gymnasiums or six schools. Is it eight? Okay. Three packages of six or we could put out four packages of four with another two, but we decide on that first. How many packages do we wanna put out? Uh, that way, there's the opportunity for any and all contractors to bid on any package in particular or all packages. So they have that opportunity. Number two is, once we would, uh, decide on those packages, uh, depending on how many packages there are, I know there's several interested mechanical engineering firms here in Lafayette, maybe other places, that are interested in doing this work for us. Uh, if, for instance, we had four packages, we would select four different mechanical engineers and at that point, we would ask them, "You go to your package of schools and you make a preliminary cost estimate of what you think it's going to cost and bring that back to us." And if we get all the mechanical engineers to do that, we will have an idea ahead of time, are we talking about the funding we have? Is it adequate or is it very inadequate or is it close? Um, and then for the actual order of schools, I know there's been several, uh, objective criteria batted about, uh, my suggestion on that is a lottery process. You, you put the name of the schools in a bowl and let someone pick them out one at a time and that becomes the order of, 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 of which they get, uh, constructed. Just a suggestion.
Ms. Morris?
Well, my first comment is that it seems to me that more than one school can be attended to at the same time. We're not doing one at a time. Um, the second comment is, along the lines of what you just said, Mr. Bordalon, it makes sense, uh, what Eric said made sense, that we need to have some type of an assessment of the schools first because it may be more efficient to do these schools first because it might just take a couple of weeks, um, and we get those out of the way. Um, so I think that we need somebody with that particular expertise to come in and tell us what order it should be in, um, based on efficiencies and the state of the school.
I wanna make another comment, uh, which was something that I looked at when, on the last, uh, architectural selection and that is, there's a couple of ways that you can, you can, especially the way we, we, one way we're talking about and that is where one entity would do all of the schools and, and we'd have one person. The, the, this may, this may end up, which happens often, uh, a joint venture or a partnership could be far, formed by a series of, of contractors. But it's important that this, that this be named as such because, and I think I'm saying it right, if it's a partnership or a joint venture, each and every one of those contractors is answerable to the board and ultimately the taxpayer. If it's done another way around where you have just one and the rest are merely consultants, they don't answer to the taxpayer or the public, they answer to the, the contractor. And so our only recourse is to the contractor, not to all of those other people doing the work. So I think we should protect ourselves and protects the taxpayer by, if it's more than one entity that they form a partnership or a joint venture or something of that nature whereby all of them sign the contract, not just one and we have only one to go back on should something occur.
Mr. Broussard? Mr. Broussard?
Mr. Bordelone, if, what Mr. Kanesic is saying, is that, in your expertise, is that one of the best way to go getting one person a week in contact, I know you got the packages, may it be two, three, four, five, or six. My fear is that if I've got only six gyms to do, my price may not be as competitive as the next one. But if one person is in charge of all 18 gyms, then we got more of a universal price and more negotiable. But if there's four or five people, you know, giving the price, and we don't know which one's giving the better ones. So, I'm asking you your opinion on what Mr. Kanesic came up with.
Mr. Broussard, there are some advantages to having one contractor perform all the work. Quantity of scale, or economy of scale. My fear in that is the lack of manpower. There's only a finite amount of manpower that does this type of work in the Lafayette area, and so, they can concentrate on a few schools at a time. Now, I don't know exactly how many schools that is. It could be four, it could be six, I'm not really sure. It could be two. But even though one contractor has 18 schools, there's only so many they can work on at a time, so they will concentrate on a certain group, and then, once it gets to a point, they'll move to another school and start working on it. So, it'll all be done in stages, but I kind of fear that it may not get done as quickly as the board perceives that it could get done, because of this lack of manpower.
But if we've got one contractor, and you have got 24, 30 months to do all 18 gyms, you go hire who you want to do that. You can hire 10, 15 other firms if you so desire. But we've got one contractor, and you've got 30 months to do 18 gyms. We answer, you answer to us only. We speak to you. Is that, is that possible? I understand you say there's so much manpower that one contractor can do, but he can sub out to anybody else he wants to.
Well, yes, sir. That's true. But I think there still could be a lack of manpower, even though he tries to subcontract out every single one at the same time. He may call other contractors in Baton Rouge, New Orleans, Lake Charles, they may not be available. And if they aren't available, and they won't come to work over here, then it just won't happen as expeditiously as hoped. That's my fear.
Mr. Kanesic?
Have you finished, Mr. Broussard? I'm sorry. Mr. Kanesic?
I'm going to offer a couple of suggestions. First, I'm going to point out that this is a 12.5 million dollar project, and while that sounds like a lot of money, it really isn't. If you consider the scale of construction going on in South Louisiana, in Lake Charles, less than an hour away, or an hour away, depending on your driving skills, they're doing 85 to 100 billion dollars worth of construction. It involves a lot of HVAC work. The skill sets exist. It's up to us as the customer to demand what it is that we want. If we put out an RFP that says, "We want you to install these 18 air-conditioners within the next 24 months, give us your best bid," to qualified contractors, and then we require them to have a performance bond. One, we can require them to have a bid bond. Two, we can require them to have a performance bond, which means if they don't hold up the provisions of the contract, then we can basically go to their bond, or cash in their bond essentially to their bonding company, and that bonding company is like an insurance policy that'll require them to come do the work, or require them, or bring in an alternative to do the work. We can require liquidated damages, like I said before, if they don't meet the schedule, where that contractor has to pay LPSS, a penalty essentially for being late. We can demand what that schedule is, whether we want it to be a 24-month schedule or a 36-month schedule. So, we just need to think bigger than doing this 18 different times, or six different times, or three different times. I don't see where there's any sort of obstacle that isn't surmountable by a contractor. Money is a big motivator. And there's an HVAC company out there, or a general contractor out there, that wants, in today's economy, wants to get 12.5 million dollars in revenue, and they're going to sharpen their pencil, they're going to negotiate great deals with the HVAC companies. Think about the buying power of buying one air-conditioning system for one school versus 18, right? It's like buying one car versus 18 cars, fleet pricing. So, again, I'll just go back to that.
Ms. Morris?
All right. And again, we're getting a little far afield from the actual motion. I think what we're looking at tonight is just approving the funds, and the process for how everything's going to happen is something that'll have to come back probably before the Finance and Facilities Committee, a joint committee meeting, I would think, and then before the board again. So, I don't think we have to hash out all of the details at this time. It's actually not part of the current motion.
Daughall?
Ms. Morris, if this gets approved, don't you expect that they're going to start working on a bid package?
I would expect that at the next Facilities and Finance Committee, we have on the agenda item, discussion of the process for how we want this done.
Okay. Mr. President, while I still have the floor, two things. I want to apologize in advance to the Superintendent and Mr. Bordelone, that I'm about to ask this question, and apologize to you that it's just a tad bit off of the recommended action, although we've been talking about something off of the recommended action. But I have several constituents who want to know why we're only considering air-conditioning gyms when we have cafeterias that don't have air-condition, but have heaters running eight hours a day in ovens. What are we going to do to address that issue? Kitchens, rather. Let me not say cafeterias.
I think we should point it to the Facilities Committee.
If you'd like to come speak, you're welcome to come up. But I'm speaking to the Superintendent. Thank you.
There are some cooking areas, kitchen areas, that are un-air-conditioned. You are correct. Not just in Lafayette Parish, other parishes as well. It's a need that needs to be addressed. The dining room area is air-conditioned at all schools. And one of the profound things we're dealing with tonight is, in one act, we would be addressing the need for 18 gyms to be air-conditioned. Obviously, we've got some glaring, unmet facility needs. We just need to put them on a list and see if we can develop a plan at some point to address those needs.
Mr. President, I'll call the question.
Okay. A question has been called on the motion. You want to repeat the motion, Melva?
We actually have to vote on the question for, pause a second.
Okay. We'll vote on the call for the question, Madam Secretary.
I'll second, just in case he needs one.
When there's a question, we're going to... The question ends, the vote is to approve the question, will end all discussion, and the next step would be to vote on the motion.
Eric?
That's not the motion. The motion is calling for the question. Okay, okay. Call for the question. I'm sorry. Cubs are winning. It's only been 100-some years. Abstention is not a no, because that didn't have to be unanimous on a question? Doesn't have to be? Two-thirds? Okay. Okay, now we're going to vote on the motion. 3.15, to consider budgeting $12,500,000 to air-condition 17 middle and high school gyms, and Truman Early Childhood Education Center. Okay, motion carries. Ms. Morrison?
Yes. As a member of the Facilities Committee, I was wondering if this call can get a price of a package deal for all the air conditionings? And also, you were talking about, like, the four and the four, get some prices for us in the meantime? Can you do that? Okay. You know, while we're waiting, we could just, you know, start working on that and try to get some prices for us. Thanks.
Okay, item 329 was pulled, I think, again, that was Dr. Chassot. Amendments to District School Attendance Administrative Rule. You want to make a motion?
I move that the Board amend the District School Attendance Administrative Rule to allow rising 11th grade students to remain at their current school.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Do we have any questions or comments from any members of the public? Any members of the board? Madam Secretary, we call for the vote. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Morris?
Dr. Aguilar, if this motion passes, will you make sure that there is some type of information provided to the families, that they are aware of the rule and the change?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, motion carries, item 3.30, elementary grade alignment. Mr. Centini?
Mr. President, I move that we approve items 1, 2, 4, and 5, and defer item 3 till next month, and ask the Superintendent to present us with a cost estimate of retaining 5th grade at Green Tea Linden Elementary.
Did you get that?
Is that too much in the same motion? Do I have to make two, break that into two?
I thought 3.31, 3.2, and 3.1, and 3.2 is in...
Yeah, I'm sorry. In items. The Board approve items 1, 2, 4, and 5, and defer item 3 to our December meeting, which time we ask the Superintendent to present a cost estimate to retain 5th grade at Green Tea Linden Elementary School.
Do we have a second? Mr. Broussard seconds the motion. Any other board comments? Yes, sir.
I spoke with the Superintendent beforehand, and this is one of the, so, out of that list of schools, right, we voted several months ago that we would, we think, 5th grade belongs on an elementary school campus. And I wholeheartedly believe that. These schools, so items 4 and 5, Broussard Middle, LJ Alamo, and Edgar Martin, their 5th graders are there this year. Those 4th graders at Woodvale, and Catherine Drexel, and Broadmoor were simply going to stay on those campuses for another year, starting next year. So, there's been no change. So, we can actually rescind that decision at Broussard Middle, Alamo, and Edgar Martin, with no practical impact, other than the disappointment of the children may have been looking forward to staying at elementary school for another year. Acadia Middle lost their 5th grade to Evangeline Elementary, and through the rezoning processes, we've learned that Evangeline has fallen, and Acadia has room. And I don't know that we can really justify adding portable buildings to Evangeline Elementary's campus. So, that's the reason I recommended that. For Scott Middle, the 5th grade class at Westside, they're going to be on Scott Middle's campus in their temporary school next year, anyway. So, I don't know that there's any practical difference with rescinding that decision. Which brings us to number three, Green Tea Linden's 5th grade, or Youngsville Middle's 5th grade moved, starting this school year. And we've, I think you guys have probably received several emails on this, on this subject. I simply asked the Superintendent if it would impact anything if we waited a month, because I'd certainly like to see what it would cost to move portable buildings there to accommodate these students that we won't need elsewhere, once the rezoning and the balancing of the population happens. And it may well turn out that it's cost prohibitive for us to do that, and we'll be forced to move them. But I think it's worth our while to wait a couple of weeks, make sure we have all the information we need, and make a decision a month from now.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aguilar? Just a couple of preliminary questions. I know you're going to get some costs, if this motion passes, you're going to get some costs together. However, you have a reason for making this recommendation. I'd like to know what the reason is. But I'd also like to state that I do not intend to ever vote to put portable buildings back on campuses that we just got rid of them. So, with that in mind, what do...
We get that. We're not even sure. Joe and I just talked briefly. We're not even sure Linden has space for additional temporary buildings at this point. But we'll come back with a cost estimate. They really are landlocked. It's really going to be a challenge. We need to also be cognizant of the fact that the Board just made a decision about rising 11th and 12th graders. That will trigger that we are going to have more high school students on traditional high school campuses. What's going to happen is that we may be leasing additional temporary buildings to accommodate these high school students for at least an additional year. Now, we don't have any numbers, like, we don't have an estimate at all for you, but by making that change to the rezoning plan, we are dramatically changing the enrollment at the high schools in particular. In doing so, we're going to have more teachers that will have to be displaced because of this action. But specifically to the point of GT Linden, we'll come back to you with an estimate.
But to this motion, my understanding is, the main reason was due to the rezoning and other factors.
Yes, sir. I didn't answer your question. The recommendation to defer the decision about placing 5th grade students on elementary campuses is based on the reality that our elementary schools in some of these environments cannot accommodate that number of additional students. It's just unfortunate that, particularly at GT Linden, we're at capacity at this point. So, we're trying to minimize costs to the Board, trying not to move temporary buildings. I do not want you or the community to believe that we are abandoning the goal of putting all 5th graders on elementary campuses. It's the right thing to do. Unfortunately, we started down this pathway before rezoning really began to show us that we are going to have some challenges at the elementary campuses. So, as fast as we can deal with this, we want to get the 5th graders on elementary campuses. But we were trying to save money, time, energy, by not having to move temporary buildings unnecessarily this summer. We also were thinking about the needs of children. We also were thinking about the needs of children. Those campuses have traditional classrooms available for those 5th graders. They had, these kids have been on these 5th grade campuses for, people tell me, for a decade or more. And so that's why we were delaying that decision by making this recommendation to you.
Well, in closing, two things. Number one, I, I agree with Mrs. Centini, with you, your staff, that they should be on elementary campuses. However, it's just as important that they not be, but we've all kind of agreed over the past couple of years, a year and a half, that we're trying to get rid of butter buildings, not add more. So with that in mind, I'd also like to ask you to please, when you come back with that information for us at next meeting or next month or whenever it's going to be on the agenda, could you please include a cost to professionally have every one of these 5th grade teachers that were moved from a middle school campus to an elementary school campus have a professional moving company, an estimate to professionally move them back, as opposed to them having to, again, pack up everything and get it moved back over?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we can do that.
Mr. Koenig?
Well, my question was related to your comment, but it's unrelated to the motion. It was a comment regarding the numbers of high school students, so I will refrain from asking that question.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Sonia, that's the, that's the last agenda item. But I know you were up earlier and there was a question call, but if you want to address the board, I mean, I'm, I'm going to take personal privilege in it.
Nine, four, none against.
Mr. President, members of the board, I just wanted to address a question about air conditioning, the gyms. I was here forever, and we air-conditioned the schools at the time I was here. Our schools were built with no air conditioning and with air circulation in the schools. So when we started to air conditioning, we had to remove windows, we had to seal walls, and, you know, we, we left some windows in the classroom, but not a lot, so that we could utilize the air conditioning and the bill would not be too high. These gyms were built, a long time ago, a lot of them, for circulation in the gyms. And of course, children are not used to the heat today. But we need to think about sealing these gyms, otherwise your air conditioning bill for this system is going to be unreal. And I think it's going to probably cost more than 12 million to seal them correctly so that the air conditioning can be truly utilized in the class, in the gym, the way it needs to be, without you paying a tremendous bill. So when that mechanical engineer looks at it, it's not just bringing that cool air in, it's sealing the gym so it doesn't fly out.
Thank you. That's, that's an interesting comment. Mr. Bordelon, didn't I read an email concerning the potential or estimated bill, electrical bill for all these air conditioning gyms? And if so, was that, was some kind of additional work included that would help keep it to a minimum?
Yes, sir. The email you saw was from the mechanical engineer who's working on the Northside High Project. He ran some approximate utility costs for us, and in round figures, it's about $25,000 per gym per year in increased utility costs. As part of these projects, we will be looking at sealing the windows, removing the existing exhaust fans, so that we can minimize as much of the air escape as possible.
Thank you very much, those. Yes, sir, Mr. Brusart.
Before we close, I know you're going to see a meeting adjourned, but my privilege, I would be, Mr. Morris left, I just wanted to wish him good luck. Thank Kitty in the middle is traveling to New Orleans on, on Friday to sing at the Pelicans game, to sing the national, so he's, he's left the building, but I want to tell him good luck and congratulations, it's an honor to do so. So watching the game on Friday night, watch for Kitty and, watch for Kitty Middle Choir to be singing the national anthem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brusart. This meeting is now adjourned.